Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee, we are back for homeless services. Couple boilerplate things. I am Councilman Eric Costello, 11th District, Chair of the Committee. Joined to my left by Councilman Leon Pinkett, 7th District, Vice Chair of the Committee. Councilman Isaac Itzey-Schleifer, 5th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District. Councilman Brandon Scott, 2nd District, Member of the Committee. To my right, Vice President of the Council Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District. Councilwoman Shannon Sneed, 13th District, Member of the Committee. And Councilman Bill Henry, 4th District, Member of the Committee. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. We are also joined by Caroline Serge from the Bureau of Budget and Management Research. I know there are members of the public who are here today for this portion that is somewhat uncommon, if not rare, for these proceedings. I'd like to take a moment to remind everyone, we're here to discuss three bills throughout this week. One of those is the ordinance of estimates or the budget. One is the city schools budget allocation for the city. And the third is the property tax rate for the city. When this process started off on Thursday, May 17th, we held what we call City Council Taxpayers Night. That was advertised in the Baltimore Sun as required by law. And that was the opportunity for members of the public to testify. We had some folks come out and testify that evening. That was televised on Comcast Channel 25 and is available online for view on YouTube on the Charm City TV channel. I say that to say, during this portion of the proceedings, we do not, as a matter of practice, accept testimony from the public, as I had just mentioned to some folks who are here, from the public. So I just wanted to make sure that we explain that for the record, why that is, because we have already accepted public testimony during a publicly announced and televised hearing. So with that, Mr. Hickey, I'd like to turn it over to you. If you could introduce yourself and your position, title, as well as everyone else that is with you today. I would ask that you keep your presentation in the five to 10-minute range. Okay, take it away, Mr. Hickey. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Terry Hickey. I'm the Director of the Mayor's Office of Human Services. Good to be back again. Human Services is sort of a hive agency. It includes different Human Services Departments that at one point in time were part of other city agencies. You heard earlier about Head Start. We have a small youth team. We have homeless services that we're going to be talking about now in our Community Action Partnership that testified during the Workforce Development Hearing. So this will be the last, and I think probably most engaging of all the Human Services hearings. I do want to introduce my team. We've got our leadership team up front. Chris Rafferty, our Deputy Director. Danielle Meister, our Program Coordinator. And Amir Asadi, our Finance Chief. And then, because it plays heavily into the investment the mayor's making moving forward, and also because we're just incredibly proud, I want to introduce the members of our Community Outreach Team. Angela McCully, who is our new Emergency Services Coordinator. Makes us one of the first homeless services agencies in the country that has somebody dedicated full-time to overseeing the sheltering system, working with our other emergency services agencies on that sort of community safety element of homelessness. Nate Fields, our Community Outreach Manager.
Yeah, can you raise your hand or stand up so everyone knows who? Thank you.
Angela? Sorry. Nate? Jamie Johnson? There's Jamie. Scarlett Gonzalez? Kenneth Mitchell? Gian Floyd? Jeff Garrett? Hannah's our liaison to the Continuum of Care. I'll talk a little bit more about the outreach team in a minute. This is the first time the mayor's office has ever had its own Community Outreach Team. What's happened in the past is we've solely contracted out with outside agencies, generally focused around specialties, medical care, mental health, and others. But I want to spend some time, because I think we've been thinking a lot about putting the services into Human Services, which is our name. Putting services into the homeless services, which is getting involved in this. And I think because of it, we've had an opportunity, I think on this topic, I've had a chance to interact with all of you more than just about anything else that we work on. But what this is really about at the end of the day is data. And it's easy to get into conversations, both about the traumatic effects of homelessness. It really is something that everybody cares about, but is often misunderstood. It's something that impacts every city. And I want to start out by saying that I still feel strongly, and will continue to come back to this idea, that we are at a point in time in Baltimore, that if we tackle this with the appropriate resources, the appropriate coordination and collaboration, we really do have a chance to bring homelessness in Baltimore to functional zero. I mean that strongly. But here's what we need to do to do it. We have to be transparent about the work. I've spoken with dozens of other homeless service agencies around the country, and oftentimes these conversations get embroiled in defensiveness. We want to be a transparent agency. We want to talk about our results, where the money is going. We want to have honest conversations about what can and can't be done, what HUD says, what they don't say, what are our restrictions. And I think we've, just in this room, had a lot of good conversations about this. But we also want to talk about things that didn't work, or things that we needed to do at the time, in an interest of protecting human life and safety, and maybe there's a better way of doing it. And a lot of discussions around ending homeless get bogged down in not wanting to talk about the things that didn't work as well as we'd hoped. There's also a lot of things that are working very well, but they're going to take time. I don't think I've seen another issue out there, except for the larger umbrella of poverty itself, that is so endemic and so widespread. And there are cities that are losing this battle rapidly. There are cities that are dealing with massive epidemics of disease that we thought were almost wiped out in cities, that are coming back because of not getting ahead of this. We don't want to be there. So I want to start out by talking a little bit about results and data. And these are part of what you're going to start to see. We're getting close to launching public dashboards. A lot of the outcomes that are in the budget book come from our HUD mandated outcomes that come in through our data system. What we are committed to doing is starting to show the entire picture. Within the next several weeks, a citizen can go online, look at a dashboard, and know what our length of stay in homelessness is. How many folks are in our emergency shelters on any given day? We want people to see that and engage in that conversation. But here are some starting point statistics and accomplishments to bring to your attention, along with some numbers, that while their achievements, will show you how much farther we still have to go. Over the last year, we've reduced the average time individuals experience homelessness by 30 percent. Length of time in homelessness is one of the key HUD standards out there. That is the amount of time spent in transitional housing, the amount of time spent in shelters, the amount of time spent on the street. That has been reduced to 145 days on average. It's still too far, but it starts to put us back in the middle of the pack in American cities, not behind where we used to be. But a 30 percent reduction over the last year is fairly staggering. We're looking to continue, that will be one of the key statistics you continue to hear from our office. Reducing the number of people experiencing homelessness on a given night by 10 percent. The 2018 PIT count, which is our annual homeless census mandated by HUD, which you may have questions about it, it's not a perfect count. It's a point in time, it's a snapshot, but you can compare like situations within your own city and progress over time, which is why HUD mandates a PIT count. The PIT count decreased in 2018 to 2,508 individuals. These are not representative of individuals all out on the street. The unsheltered PIT count from the previous year showed about 500 people living on the streets. Does that get everybody? No. But the 2,500 includes folks living in shelters, transitional housing, and on the street. That is a rough approximation of our overall homeless count. Using the HUD definition, which we can get into later, school systems use a different definition of homelessness, which tends to lead to public frustration about having conversations about what these counts really mean. We expanded our guaranteed winter sheltering into the second year. We started it last winter, in which we guaranteed every man, woman, child, and family that presented themselves as homeless on nights that the temperature was 32 degrees or below would have a bed that night. You all lived through this winter with us, and you know it was a lot different than the year before. We doubled the night of bed nights. 12,000 additional bed nights of winter shelter this year, of many of the folks who hadn't been inside in years. We increased our street outreach capacity by 30 percent due to the addition of the MOE's Street Outreach Team, and I've introduced those members. We've increased the number of unsheltered individuals who moved to shelter or permanent housing by 23 percent. We've piloted, as many of you have read about, some of you have been out there to visit and have talked a great deal about this, a new bridge housing program, which is an alternative to traditional shelter. I want to put this on the record right now, and I'm sure there'll be questions about it. Nobody, nobody in homeless services anywhere in the country likes, appreciates, or thinks that we should build strategies around closing down homeless encampments. We do our best every day to interact with the dozens of encampments. Some people don't know anything about, because they're out of view. Some are in plain sight. Our people are interacting with folks every day, trying to find links to resources. But here's the thing. At some point, safety and human interest drives the decisions we make. We needed an alternative for people who did not want to go to our traditional shelters. There wasn't room, they didn't feel safe, they wanted another place to go. That's what led to the opening of the Bridge Housing Facility at Volunteers of America. We can talk a little more about that later. It mirrors strategies in other cities, where they are creating facilities, both large and small, in neighborhoods and out of neighborhoods, which are alternatives to traditional shelter. Where are you allowed to have pets? Where are you allowed to come in as a couple? Where are you allowed, you know, zero barrier? We launched two new permanent supportive housing projects this year, and expanded three existing rapid rehousing projects. Happy to answer questions later about rapid rehousing. It's a housing-first principle of bringing people off the street and out of shelters into housing immediately, bringing the supportive services to them. The older model of transitional housing, in which you went to a facility and stayed until those running the facility may have felt you were ready to move to the next step, has been changing dramatically as HUD changes its funding formulas. But we're also proud to say that we are seeing real results. People that are put in housing almost right away, that are given access to job training and supportive services, are staying, we're finding now at a rate of over 85 percent in these units. We will not solve our way out of homelessness with the old voucher model that some people became accustomed to. We need localized tools. We need more creative ways of doing this. One of our greatest tools as of late has been the simple idea of having our outreach team developing relationships with people on the street and finding out, this 22-year-old young man has a mother out West who's been looking for him for three years. The stories of how people end up on our streets, large numbers of them from other places, are staggering in and of themselves. Family reunification, helping locate people's families and figuring out, how can we reunify them in a positive way? Some people that are in our shelters can actually afford market-rate housing. We haven't had the proper navigation or case management in the past. This sort of preventative approach is by far the most cost-effective way, along with rapid rehousing. And it's necessary, if we're going to make a dent in this now. Danielle can talk a little bit later. What we now have, something that we're incredibly proud of, is our coordinated access. It's a front-door system. You've probably heard complaints of people being endlessly surveyed, having to fill out multiple questionnaires at every program. What are your needs? What's your background? Do you have ID? Now it is one entry point, one housing assessment. That translates into a vulnerability score that helps link you to real time with the housing we have. The challenge we'll talk about throughout this presentation is, how much housing do we have? And how can we increase permanent housing? But we now have a very sophisticated front door that utilizes technology and data to match people with resources. We will be talking over the next several weeks of a new permanent housing model that we are leveraging, both for the first time ever in Maryland history, the ability to bill Medicaid for homeless services, supportive services, and rental supports. Supportive services tend to be the missing piece when we're trying to find permanent housing. We were granted 100 of 300 slots offered by the state to develop a Medicaid waiver pilot that we're pairing with different strategies to, we hope, over the next year, house 140 additional individuals and families. That'll be starting in earnest over the summer. And then finally, in something, Councilman Scott, that I alluded to in the prior hearing, we want to be talking about jobs, we want to be talking about economic sustainability, and we want to be talking about equity. Homelessness is one of the issues that you can most often boil down to issues of equity and structural racism. We need to be building those structures throughout our department, throughout the Continuum of Care, and the way we look at how we approach this, from the ground up and the top down. By embedding the idea of equity in our economic sustainability, and hiring people to actually help interface with all the other economic development machines in the city to decide, what do we need to do to be connecting unstablely housed folks to work from the minute they enter our system, so that they can be self-sustaining in a rapid rehousing model or something similar, is the only way we're going to get out and stay out of the current levels of support that we need. So I want to close with five quick points. We are, as an agency, fortunate enough to have been given an increase in our funding for this coming year. Spread throughout mainly our outreach to the homeless and temporary housing for the homeless, which are very large budget areas. So I want to explain as clearly as I can, and then open up for questions, what are the priority areas we plan on using this investment to support? First is the growth and sustenance of that Community Outreach Team. Having those boots on the ground, being at your community meetings, having the ability to respond to constituent concerns, respond in real time to fill out housing assessments, to help relocate, navigate people to services, work with the police, to avoid overpolicing this contact with homelessness. Instead, having outreach workers connecting with other outreach workers and other supportive services in the city is key. Two, increasing our year-round emergency shelter capacity and quality. We are issuing a new RFP for what was called the Men's Overflow Shelter. We are no longer going to be calling any of our shelters overflow shelters. The truth of the matter is, we have more people than we can fit at Weinberg. We need these facilities. Until we can get ahead of the housing curve, we will be adding more fresh meals at our shelters. We will be focusing more on case management and other supports in the RFPs for the groups that run these shelters. We have a new grievance policy in place. We're working with a group called the Consumer Advocacy Work Group, of current and formerly homeless, to dig into what sort of radical customer service do we need to be instituting in our shelters, to ensure that as many people that need to be there are comfortable doing so. Three, we need to continue to grow and sustain our lifesaving winter shelter model. We can't let ourselves rest on the laurels of having 12,000 bed nights. We need to add more case management. There's people we get in the winter that we never see. We need to have case managers on-site and the ability to get them into our system on demand. We need to continue to grow our staff around coordinated access. And we need to ensure that we have supportive services, so that as we get more opportunities to work with potentially even private landlords and others, to build permanent supportive housing for the homeless, that we have the ability, as an agency, to pay the costs of supportive services, because you can't just provide a home, you have to provide support as well.
Thanks for letting me give you that intro, Mr. Chair. I'd like to open it up to discussion.
Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mr. Hickey. I guess my first question is probably more of a question, just to get a better sense of where we're headed as a city. And I believe it was back in 2008, then-Mayor Dixon announced Journey Home, which was an effort to essentially zero out, as you said, homelessness by 2018. Here we are in 2018. Where are we? I mean, did we just lose 10 years? I mean, homelessness is supposed to be eradicated by now. And I'm troubled to think that if eradicating homelessness is a true aspiration of this city, it should not be an aspiration that's dependent upon administration to administration. It is something that should be picked up from Dixon to Blake to Poo, Rollins Blake to Poo. So why isn't homelessness a lot, the homeless condition in our city, a lot better than I would imagine than it was in 2008?
So I think everything you said is absolutely correct, in many ways. I think, you know, and what I'm not going to try to answer this question with is saying, "Well, I've been here a year." Because that doesn't really matter. What matters is that continuation. The Journey Home, we still use the title.
Right.
We could spend a lot of time on this, but I want to give you the high points. We had an entire shift in the way HUD looks at local management. We had an entire change in the legislative framework, which brought rise to the Continuum of Care boards in localities. We had to convert a Journey Home Board that was appointed by the mayor, and answered to the mayor, to a community-elected Continuum of Care Board that answers to the community, that's made up of providers, government agencies, citizens, those currently and formerly experiencing homelessness. That was a big transition. We didn't have a particularly well-staffed agency at homeless services. Everything was contracted. I'm sure some of you have run into good plans that don't have the infrastructure, and good infrastructure without a strategy. And I think both of them have to be in the same place at the right time. If you went back and looked at the Journey Home Plan, and you looked at what the Mayor's Work Group on Homelessness put forth, and then you looked at the best practices put out by the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness, and then if you looked at what we're doing with our budget, they're really going to line up. You know, the idea, there's some new names on things. Transitional housing is not what people want to do now. Rapid rehousing is. But at the end of the day, it's about moving people through a continuum more quickly. And we weren't doing that. And I think everything that's within my charge, and what I want to be accountable more than anything, is to show you how we're moving people through that continuum. Because that is, simply put, with a complex background, the way we're going to solve this. So we've learned from the Journey Home. Many of those involved in the Continuum of Care were veterans of the Journey Home days who share your frustrations, as do many of the people out on the streets. We have people that have been inside of our emergency shelters for six years, living And so, using data, being unafraid to say, we need real policies in place to move people along. But we needed the outreach, we needed the housing placements. And so, I want to show you the construction of a plan that moves people through. That's why there hasn't been a glorious trumpeted, "This is the new plan." We want to show you in numbers and resources, and then regular revisits to the council about what the numbers look like to show you that progress.
Okay. My second question, back in August of last year, we had a very public display out in front of City Hall with an encampment. And I'm not certain of the total number, but it was around 50 persons, I would imagine, that were a part of that encampment. And so, there were some promises made, I believe, as far as permanent housing, in order for those individuals to move from that encampment. I saw that, and I don't know if the administration saw it, I saw that as an example to display the process that we would like to enter into, to get people from homelessness to permanent housing. Can you describe the process that happened, from those individuals that started off at that encampment, where they are now, and how many people got into permanent housing?
Sure. I appreciate that question, and I was hoping to get something like that, so I could go through this. This is one of the areas we talk about. You know, this was not a planned situation. We were just launching our coordinated access system, which, by the way, is supposed to be rigid around taking people who have been in line, and scoring folks, and giving them a vulnerability score, and lining them up with the best housing for them, right? So it's supposed to remove this whole idea that if I go here, I'm going to get a better placement. If I encamp here, I'm going to get a voucher. And that had been one of the reactionary strategies that we'd fallen into, which gets back to your question about how we're going to move this forward. So at the same time, we had a number of folks, many of whom were fairly new to town, who had not been part of our system for very long. Some had been. Some were chronic street homeless, who had not been in our shelters. Some had significant, and I, you know, many of the members of my outreach team, many of the folks we work with, are or have experienced homelessness, and we have very blunt talks. There's really huge obstacles people face. Getting housing, working with private landlords, trying to arrange leases, these are complicated. You know, I said to the Baltimore Sun, think about, I just, you know, if you refinance a house, well, imagine trying to refinance your house, that level of paperwork, while you're in a tent, while you're on the street. And while you're not in the same place two days in a row, and you're working with different caseworkers. So we were getting close to building a system that could accommodate all that, and then 50 people came forward. Remember, it was originally an economic advancement empowerment protest that was joined in on by a number of our homeless residents, who, when they came into City Hall and started talking, and I was in those original meetings with the mayor, said, "Okay, well, we want a lot of things, but what we want is to be housed now." And so, we then had to build a system. It hurt me to have to move, we were cautiously looking at Pinderhues. We needed to move people where we could do triage off the street. We needed private meeting spaces to start to figure out. You know, several of the members that we deal with in encampments are sex offenders. We have to have honest discussions right up front about what they're going to qualify for. So we needed sight and sound separation. So we had to first, as far as your journey goes, we had to get people off the street, and we had to do it in about 24 hours. And so, we needed to utilize the Pinderhues Building, which had been under the control of our agency for the last several years, only partially being used. Then, over the course of time, we accommodated the residents' desire to have a self-run, self-governed shelter, which was an amazing experience and empowerment, but it also made it very difficult to go through a case management model of getting people focused on working on their ID and their paperwork and everything else that we're required to do. So after several weeks at Pinderhues, we were able to arrange more condensed, easier to work within space, both for the women and men, and helping up mission. Everybody was offered a chance to move forward from there. And then, we worked with HCAM, Healthcare Access Maryland, who had just been given the contract to do this rapid rehousing, and it was not necessarily that population. They were already, they stopped everything and backed up to be able to help us figure out. And what came of this was, and I say this to you in full honesty, when we looked at the list of people that were there, the list were folks that a lot of folks said couldn't be rapidly rehoused, and wouldn't be successful. So here are the numbers, Councilman. I wasn't going to do this, but this is the small print, and I've just crossed over that line, so I'm going to put these on. There were actually 45 individuals that ultimately signed up, filled out paperwork as part of being part of that Tent City cohort that went to Pinderhues. Of those 45 clients, 30 are now permanently housed using our rapid rehousing model. Two were able to self-resolve their homelessness with some financial assistance, didn't feel they needed to go through the whole model, they needed a security deposit, a couple months' rent, and they felt they were pretty good to go. Four, we've just identified housing. HCAM is now working on final preparations with the landlord. Seven chose to exit the program, did not wish to pursue housing with the city at this time. One was unfortunately incarcerated during this process, and one was not cooperative with the process, left, walked out of the program. So that is 36 of the 45 that, within the next couple of weeks, will have housed that entire cohort.
Okay.
Sorry for the lengthy, I just really wanted you to see what went into that process.
I appreciate that.
Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yes, homelessness is a very integral part of progress for our city. It not only affects people that are sex offenders, we also have seniors, youth, mental illness. It's the whole gamut of structure. And it involves job creation, it involves finding housing. And then to move forward with my question, on page 208 in the budget book, it talks about increasing funding for the street expansion team and a new LGBTQ liaison. I need to, could you just describe, actually, in a short form, what does the homeless street team, what do they actually do? Just go through a one-day, eight-hour progress of what they do, or is it more than eight hours? What do they do?
So, it's important to note, Councilman, we did not have evening or weekend outreach before the advent of this team. So we have teams coming out as early as 5:00 in the morning, and working long past midnight, working on the weekends. They're at the farmer's market, which usually draws a lot of folks, they're able to find people. So a lot of this involves, I don't want to oversimplify it, but on the street, walking around the neighborhoods in this city. We've got the city divided up in quadrants. We're very driven, to be honest, by the comments and concerns we get from council members, that they're getting from their neighborhoods. We look for hotspots. One of the best practices with encampments is not to let them get big and out of control so you're faced with safety issues. One of the best practices is, almost every day, any encampment of any significant size is visited on a regular daily basis. There's one over on Russell Street where our team stopped by daily for, I think, about 10-... three months, and finally, some of the folks living there said, "You know what? I'm ready to go, I want help." So a lot of it is developing relationships. One of the things we found is, we have more and more panhandlers entering our city that are here solely to panhandle. Many, because we talked to them about why they're here, come from other places. They're here because the drugs are cheaper than where they were living, and they don't want services. And they're here to panhandle, they'll stay at an inexpensive hotel that night. We have contact with many of them, we stop by businesses.
Does the street team have to have special criteria to be, to apply for those jobs?
We tried to do something different here. We opened, so all of our, so two parts. To apply, no. We tried to peel off, we worked with DHR to peel away almost all of the traditional requirements, educational, bachelor's degree, all of that. We were looking for lived experience with homelessness at some point in time. A member of the team speaks fluent Spanish as a first language, a member of the team is a vet. Several of our team had experienced homelessness. One was homeless when he was hired by the city and is now permanently housed. And so, no, we actually tried to deconstruct, and it was an interesting experience, but we want to continue to grow in that skill set. They have to have a real interest and connection to the community that they're serving. We're not here to be the people, the team's not here to be the folks that get a call and go move homeless people away from your business. You know, we're here to go out and say, "You might want to know a little bit about this person. This is their name, this is where they come from, this is why they're here. Here's another way that you can deal with them." The team's had extensive interactions with the managers of local Starbucks in how to work with people coming into their store, not calling the police. We're planning to do some trainings with Starbucks over the next several months, working with businesses. You know, the calls we get from angry people, when we have a chance to actually answer those calls and go out and visit the businesses face-to-face, they really just wanted to know somebody from the city cared enough to be paying attention and explained to them the situation. So the team is working, they've been doing a lot of family reunification lately. We track, so everybody we meet's entered into a data system. The team has been given extensive trauma training, working with the Health Department. They're training pretty consistently, and so, I don't know if there's a typical day. One day, we're getting a call from a forestry ranger in a park that finds people living out in the back of a park that nobody knew about and we're out there talking to them, so.
So yesterday, we had an extensive session with the Baltimore City Public School System. Is there, and discussion of our homeless youth in the school system, is there a partnership with the Baltimore City Public School System and also with senior centers and our senior population, because we do have a number of seniors that become homeless as well, being on fixed incomes?
Right.
How are you doing partnerships with those agencies?
So those partnerships, I think, are key to our success moving forward. One of the things that we are doing, Homeless Services was not particularly known for interfacing with other agencies in really meaningful ways. Working with the school system, working with DPW and DOT, one of the secrets has been keeping areas of the city clean so that there isn't a demand to move people before we can find them safe, secure, permanent housing. I want to talk about the school system at the end of this, but simply working as a subgroup of VRI with the different agencies, if you think about it, think about your own districts. People are encamped in a certain area but spending time in a park. Whose responsibility are these different areas of the city? It's been a lot of time just interfacing with agencies to figure out how to get the concerns and complaints solved. We've been doing a lot more work with DSS about preventative resources, because what we aren't talking about squarely today are the hundreds of calls we get a week for people that call us that are about to be homeless. And most of our homelessness resource is that can't go to them. So working more smartly within our own agency, with CAP, with DSS. We are, and I want to make sure folks know this, I truly believe that Baltimore City can become known as the city that made the best effort to end youth homelessness in the United States. We've made some great efforts so far in our works with the school system. We're applying for a large NOFA through the Department of Housing and Urban Development that if we get it, would be several million dollars a year just to focus on homelessness. From a structural level, homeless youth in schools, it's a different definition than HUD, there's a whole different set of challenges, and most of them don't access the services that we see. So focusing on how do we build a better partnership with the school system and communities, because it's communities that are finding these families. So I wouldn't say we're there yet, Councilwoman, but we've got agreements and conversations in place to start moving this forward at a much more rapid pace.
Lastly, in the book, page 213, Permanent Housing for the Homeless, the number of persons in emergency housing FY '17 exceeds the target for FY '18. So have you been able to make significant progress towards reducing the number of people in transitional housing?
Yeah. Danielle, I'd like you to, you can dig a little deeper on that one. Do you want to go?
So just to clarify, your question was about temporary housing?
Yes.
I heard permanent, but then transitional.
Transitional, yes.
So for fiscal year '18, so we have seen a reduction in the number of folks that are in emergency shelters and transitional housing. For permanent housing, that continues to grow every year. So we have, so in '17, we did 3,524 folks, which was an increase. And then for permanent housing, so far, we're on track to serve a little over 4,000 people for fiscal year '18. So I would assume that by the time we get our data out on the back end in the third quarter of this year, we'll be showing a pretty large increase. And our targets were set at the actual, because we didn't anticipate any new permanent supportive housing resources come on, line this past year, but we ended up having an increase. So we're actually going to outperform our target for this past fiscal year.
And that's because you're creating more permanent housing?
Yeah. Yeah, we're creating new permanent housing through two methods. So one is permanent supportive housing, which is permanent rental assistance coupled with really comprehensive supportive services. And we've been growing that. So just this past year, we expanded 110 units solely through our own funding, but we're also working with a lot of partner agencies, like HABC and HCD, and a lot of other community-based housing partners to grow that even further. So sometimes we fund whole projects ourselves, and sometimes we're pairing our funding with community partners to make those dollars work harder. So we do that method for permanent supportive housing, and we also focus on an intervention known as rapid rehousing, which provides short and medium-term rental assistance up to 24 months, along with supportive services. For those families that really just need some transitional time to get back on their feet, they don't need lifetime assistance. What they really need are all the tools and resources to stabilize their situation and then achieve and maintain their permanent housing. So getting an adequate income, getting access to employment services. So those are the two primary ways we increase our pool of available resources. And just over the last year, through our funding alone, we've increased the number of households served by well over 400.
Thank you. Councilman Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sir, and thank you for all your work. Couple of quick questions for you. I know that you guys have been involved in the first talks around the municipal ID bill and the implementation of the project. Can you talk about what that would mean for your agency for, and the access for homeless individuals, for them to actually be able to have an official identification call from the city that allows them more access to services? I know that at one point, you guys have partnered with organizations to create an ID for homeless people, but to have it officially from the city, what do you think that's going to mean for that population?
Well, so for my outreach team, how many of you see identification as one of the biggest issues facing the folks you're working with? I mean, some people don't think this, it's number one. And I think that that's one of those innovative areas that we can partner. And with that, it opens up 1,000 doors for the folks we're working with.
Thank you. My second question, you talked about the equity lens. Can you talk about it a little deeper? Like, tell us exactly what portions of your agency you started to work in and how you expected to see that expand out as we go over time?
Right. I wasn't going to, but do you mind? I, you know, we've got a smart team that is incredibly passionate, and I was lucky enough to get to work with. Hannah's been leading a lot of this work around financial empowerment and equity for us, and it's something that we believe in, so I'd like her to have a chance to tell you a little bit about it.
Good afternoon. Through our Journey to Jobs Project, which we've done in partnership with the Heartland Alliance, we've worked on examining--
Hannah, pull the mic up some, because they're going to yell at us at home. Pull it up some so that we can hear you, but they might not be able to hear you on the recorder.
Sure. So through our Journey to Jobs Project, which we've done in partnership with the Heartland Alliance, we have looked at the specific barriers faced by homeless job seekers to think about how can we create a homeless service system that integrates employment supports. And through that process, we have worked on a few different pieces of integrating a race equity agenda. You all are all welcome to attend a forum that we're going to hold in a few weeks to release the findings of that report. And so, the areas that we're really focused on in that are building in performance measures that disaggregate data by race so that we can see the ways in which our homeless service system is or is not performing equally for all individuals. I can tell you now, and I'm sure you won't be surprised, that black and African, people that identify as black or African-American are overrepresented in our homeless service system. So one of the pieces is around that, that we should always be disaggregating data based on populations of individuals that we think may be inadequately served in our system. Another piece of that is a recommendation to start partnering through the Continuum of Care that works with all of our homeless service providers to look at the composition of agencies, and particularly the leadership and the board memberships of those agencies, and ask them to partner with the Continuum of Care as a joint partnership with the Mayor's Office to think about what they could do differently to increase opportunities for their staff, particularly people of color, to take on leadership positions in their agencies. Another area where we're doing some of that is through our existing Consumer Advisory Work Group that we established last year, which is comprised of people that are currently or formerly homeless, and we've asked them to help us take on some of that work and make recommendations to highlight how we could better equip our Continuum of Care and our office, or the Mayor's Office, to embed those strategies over time.
Thank you.
Can I follow up on your first question?
Pinkett? I'm sorry, I just wanted to follow up on Councilman Scott's question. How long has the lack of ID been a barrier to the homeless population?
Oh, I mean, as long as I think we know they've been there. There were some movements towards making getting IDs easier, but I'm telling you a lot of what our--
Right. And I'm not saying that you had to, I'm just saying, it's probably been a problem for a long time now.
Oh, eternally.
And I'm just saying that if nobody else is going to figure it out, then maybe we need to figure this thing out. I mean, if that's the most significant barrier, then let's figure it out. I mean, it's, okay, maybe it is rocket science, and I just don't know, but if that is the biggest barrier, let's figure it out.
We've been trying to expedite within existing systems, which is necessary, but not the best way to solve a long-term problem. You're absolutely right.
Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
So you've talked a bit about the outreach team, and we love that you have that now, and there's money in your budget to grow it?
Correct.
Okay. I know firsthand that your outreach team has been very responsive to requests in terms of identifying areas. Do you have so many requests that you are essentially just going where people have asked you to go? Or do you have a work plan that already exists that you're trying to work your way around the city in a certain fashion?
You ask good, complete questions. So where you first started saying, that's kind of where we, like, as soon as we started the team, and most have only been on since March. So Nate came on in December, helped us set everything up. So it has been spreading incrementally. And then, what you then described is the ideal that we're moving quickly towards. So Angela, who just recently joined our team as our emergency services coordinator, is in part helping us build that bigger system. So what we are doing, and we're going to announce it really soon, we just want to be sure, we're going to have, for the first time ever, and I know many of you in the council have asked for this, an established mailbox and hotline for constituent and other service requests related to homelessness. We still need to utilize 211, to the degree we need to utilize 311, we can't say those systems don't need to get better, but we needed a way to start to collect and track and be accountable for that. So we're starting with baby steps. We break down the calls we get, though, in terms of somebody who is in crisis, lying face-down on a sidewalk in front of 7-Eleven. If it goes to me, if it goes to anybody, it gets to Nate, we've got somebody out there immediately. Do they need to link to the CRT team at the police? Do they need to call BHSB? Do they need to call one of our mental health providers? All the way up to, I've just discovered a new encampment in the woods, I don't think anybody, you know, can you guys go out and visit? We've had some council members, there are drug treatment centers and others in your communities, and there's a lot of people out in that area, and folks have wanted to know, can you go ask them what they need? Are they getting what they need? Are they, you know, do they need more than what they've got here? Are they homeless? So that's what, what we've also worked in, though, is the visits to the community meetings to tell communities, here's what's actually happening. We've got, so yes, we, by, over the next few months, we'll have the hotline out, we'll be tracking, making regular reports on the patterns we're getting, and we'll have a good system for doing that.
Following up on that, not to be confused with the second question, but following up on that, is your intention, as the total size of the team grows, to begin to create geographic zones? Since I know we've talked about how important relationship building is for the work that they're doing.
Yes.
So eventually, we'll get to a point where each of the council people will know that this is the person or team that handles requests in our area.
Exactly like the old idea of having the beat officer. We want people to know that person, we want the folks encamped in that area to know that person. And I just wanted to mention, because I think this is worth noting, one of our, we were able to add an additional outreach member using LDC granted funds in the Southern Gateway area. So that gives Pigtown and others, we have fully funded one position. There are large institutions in the city that were calling us, saying, "Can you come, please, deal with these issues?" And we said, "The best way to do that's outreach. So if you want to invest, we now have a model you can invest in." The general funds were needed to get this going, but we want to continue to grow this also with private investment. And we think we have an option of utilizing state funds to start to add outreach members that are young people, that would be focused on outreach to young people that are out in the community, both unstably housed and with other issues.
The second question, and this was actually one that got texted to me from a constituent, because people are watching. The question was, can you talk a little bit about the referral system? We're, my district is fortunate enough to have a Community Action Partnership Center. There is some question about whether it's helpful in some additional or preferential way for homeless who are looking for services or assistance. Is it better for them to go to the Community Action Partnership Center and get a referral there, or is it the same as if a team member comes to where they are on the street? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, and this is a question we get a lot, because obviously, people are desperate for housing and for opportunities. And so, we get asked, "If I go to a certain place, if I work with a certain provider, do I have a better chance?" And I think in the Wild West days of lots of providers on different funding streams, with housing vouchers going out through different methods, maybe that had been true in some way, shape, or form. The whole idea of coordinated access is one front door, everybody doing the same survey, one score that goes in the system, and that person's place in the system is transparent. So remember, the council keeps an eye on what we're doing, HUD keeps an eye on what we're doing, the state, but also the Continuum of Care. We have to report in detail to them, and our Coordinated Access Committee watches carefully to make sure we're following those rules. So the Community Action Partnership, which a lot of folks don't know about, but are in many of your districts, that's where we try to do a lot of work on poverty alleviation and homelessness prevention. When I get calls coming into Homeless Services from a family that is about to be homeless, we can't utilize HUD homelessness dollars, and really, those families don't want to be pointed to a shelter at that point. It's not what they're looking for. So what we'll be doing next year is moving more of our state-funded eviction prevention programs to CAP. So it's easier and accessible, and because we already have CAP workers on payroll, we can put more money out on the street in eviction prevention. So what I would say to yours and others constituents are, if you are having issues with staying in your home, we desperately want to do everything we can to keep you there, because it's much more expensive to solve that issue in the home, particularly if we're trying to put you back in a rental unit.
Right.
And so, that would be where you'd go to CAP, or for energy assistance, or for financial empowerment. There is no advantage to going to any one, but I will be clear, and this is what we've worked out, we have a chronic street homeless issue in Baltimore. We are focusing the majority of our resources in this area on people that have been homeless the longest, in our shelters the longest, or on the street, unsheltered, and families, to get them into housing first and work our-- to get them into housing first and work our way up.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Stokes.
Mr. Higgy, I just heard you talking about mailbox, and when you homeless, I worked at NVA for eight years, and for you to get an ID when they mail it out, you do have to have an address, so that's good to hear. My suggestion would be is work through NVA. You can cut through that barrier, making sure homeless people receive ID, because they got to have the right kind of documents. My other statement is, we know about the homeless, but I've been going back and forth with you and Mr. Cronin from Albemarle Square about, we have a lot of people that really help feed homeless people and people in this city, but they have to go to the bathroom. Nobody want to talk about that. Can you talk about maybe a pilot program in terms of, I guess they call trailers, in terms of so homeless people have an opportunity to use the bathroom, take a shower? That's important, because if we don't do that, we dealing with a health problem that we get calls about people going to the bathroom from, people feed them, they still got to go to the bathroom. So can you talk about if you have a pilot program and when it's going to start?
It's, it's, having a job like this, it's very sobering to start to think about basic human functions and the issues we have. And so it started out with a lot of constituent calls about issues related to where people are urinating and defecating. What it, once I started investigating this and had our team looking into the reality, because people have been talking about this for years, but it hadn't happened, the reality is it's one of the core principles of even dignity, to have a place to take a shower, to have a place to go to the bathroom in private, and just to get a minute off the street. The problem is, other cities have gone down these roads of really expensive solutions, solar-powered, self-flushing, self-cleaning toilets, monitored porta-potties, that instantly become havens for bigger health and safety-related issues. The one thing that was clear to us was that staffed mobile units is really the only cost-effective measure that worked. We looked at opening public bathrooms, municipal bathrooms. Once you start staffing those with government employees, nothing really seemed to work. So, Councilman, when it rains, it pours, you really focused our attention on this, thank you. There are three groups now in the queue. One, a church-based organization, has a laundry, trailer, bathroom modular setup that we're going to be piloting next week for 30 days in collaboration with Jonestown Community Council, helped pick the location. DPW, I won't bore you with what has to actually go into making one of these work and hooking up to water, and where do you dump the waste, and all of that, but we will have a pilot. Our outreach teams will be working with them, they'll be working on it for a month to see what works. There's another church-related group that has a more advanced, we think, mobile unit with laundry that they'd like to pilot. And then there's a group working with some local corporate investors that think they want to build something out, at least around laundry. But what I want to be clear, and the mayor has said this, she knows it's a problem and open to the ideas, but we need to be working with you and your constituent organizations to figure out where the right places are to have these units, that they're in coordination with caregiving facilities, and that we have an outreach component. I don't think, we want them stop, you know, we have to have set up organized areas for them to be, but we will have our first one up and running, and I look forward to reporting back.
Okay, and then, just one suggestion, I'll make sure I put you in contact with somebody at NVA, so we can work through them barriers in far as making sure homeless people have IDs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm, added to Councilman Stokes, I happened to take a look at a pilot, I think it's in Marin County, California, that you might want to take a look at. It seems like they have a really good setup, they've kind of created a model or scenario of how to do it, and-
Oh, for the mobile unit?
Yeah, for the mobile units.
Great.
Oh, yeah. Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you. So you mentioned a new employee was homeless and is now has housing. Is that housing in Baltimore City?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. And can you send over, can we add this to the chart, can, I mean, add this to the questions? Can you send over a organizational chart that shows all the employees? And I'm curious, how many of them are actually living in the city?
Got it.
He's, oh, for all of them?
It was sort of a blanket request, so I was going to include all of Mo's in that, not just homeless services.
Perfect. That'll work for me. And then, one of my last questions, how many, I guess, what's the definition of an encampment? Because I think anything with five or more people would maybe an encampment. How does that work? And I would imagine, then, it's a lot of places throughout Baltimore City with that, and so what's the count? How many do we have throughout Baltimore City that you guys constantly go to?
So that's constantly changing. There's not really a formal definition for encampment. The United States Interagency Council on Homelessness talks about, what you use the number five. More than five tents in one area is a real warning sign that something needs to be done from a service provision standpoint. And Guilford being the learning model, when we didn't have the capacity to really get in, do the housing assessments, talk to people about what they needed, that encampment was growing by two to three tents a day. We had three deaths in that encampment over the winter. So we know what out of control and unsafe looks like. But what does an encampment that's got five tents, but they keep it very clean and they're out of the way, versus something that people see all the time? What we're trying to do is not judge any of that, because to me, Councilwoman, an encampment is a group of tents. An encampment are people squatting in an abandoned warehouse. We have people that are living in wooden structures, cabins in woods that are on the list to be sold. We have folks living on the grounds of surplus schools that we're finding, right on the, so, you know, any of those are encampments. And so what we're trying to figure out is, oh, and we just found a mobile encampment of broken-down RVs and trailers that's grown over the years. You can't turn an eye to these, and so that's the loose definition, but what our teams are doing, there's probably a good 10 to 12 clusters right now, at least the ones that we're, we're paying attention to, the resources we have. We're encouraging people, though, to let us know, we're finding more that are under overpasses that have really, wait, we lost a woman this past winter who'd been living over an underpass, a lot of folks didn't know she was there. It was just one tent. So, you know, what we want to do is have people realize we're there to help first and foremost. And Guilford aside, we want to, you know, I'm going to be able to report back soon, two or three encampments of people that we've been able to find housing for almost all of them, using all the regular methods we've said today, no special treatment. Those folks are coming off the street because they want to, not because they're being made to.
Can I ask one more, one more question? Is it okay? Did I do my two? And I'm just curious, for, when you do go to the mayor, what is the number one thing that says, we need more money in this pot, because this is what we see every single day? Like, we need money, is it for making sure someone stays in their home? Or is it for toiletries? Is it for food? What's the number one where you say, Madam Mayor, we need more money for this?
Right. Well, over the last six months, I mean, not to oversimplify, but it was boots on the ground. It was, we needed people that could actually respond out on the street in real time, and we needed the supplies they needed to get to people. So that was one. A lot of you would assume that my, my thing would be housing, and the reason that it's not for our agency is because the immense nature of what it's going to take to actually pay for permanent housing. But what we have been asking for, and we've, you've seen it reflected in this budget, is the ability to bring more supportive services to the table. There are two or three permanent housing projects that are coming online right now, and the developers didn't yet have a plan for offering case management and supportive services to the residents, which, that's failing before you even start. So we're going to be able to provide that for them. So outreach, boots on the ground, actual, real supportive services. And, you know, this isn't going to sound like a big deal to some people, but we now have flexible funding for when we have a young person who we get into a home and has no furniture, has no dishes, doesn't have clothes, what, needs a security deposit, some flexible funding where we can immediately remove a barrier to that person getting off the street. We'll be talking this summer all about permanent housing and braiding together all of these other non-general-funded programs to allow us to do more hardcore permanent housing for the homeless on top of that.
Thank you.
Councilman Dorsey.
This table got its own mic, man. Hi.
Hi.
What I want to ask you about, did we talk about the Veterans of America spot yet?
Just on my list, but-
It's on your list?
Go ahead.
I visited it, be a day before, anybody, a day before the eradication of the encampment along 83.
Mm-hmm.
I was really surprised that, like, 24 hours before people were going to be moving in there, that there weren't a sufficient number of beds in there, that they were of, like, just such poor quality, it wasn't furnished, it was, it basically looked like a jail, which was not surprising, because it was also being used by Maryland Correctional for other purposes. And the people that were running it were telling me, we've never done anything like this before. And we don't really know what we're doing. And we think that there's going to be access to the recreational area here, and we think that there's going to be access to the computer room here. And months later, I'm talking to the people who have been staying there, and they don't have access to the recreational area. And they don't have access to that computer lab, and it's right there, like, 50 feet, 30 feet from where they're sleeping. You know, and it's in basically as remote a location as possible. And it sounds to me like, from talking to folks that are there, that they're not really having particular success in finding new employment. Transportation is the number one barrier to employment from every employer and job seeker that I've spoken to in the city. And when, there's basically nothing out there but industrial yards and asphalt processing and highway and railroad tracks, you're basically placing people as far away from employment opportunity as could possibly be without basically shipping them out of the city of And it stinks to me of, like, out of sight, out of mind. And you know this, because I wrote you to this effect on that same day. And so I'm really struggling to understand how this has been much of a success. And it, it just doesn't look anything like best practices. And I want to, I want to know if we're going to spend another million and a half dollars-
Yeah, there you go, 1.5.
For another six months, I mean, we're four months in now, and we're not really seeing any thing. I hear that eight people have been rehoused. That's not rapid rehousing, right? And, are we going to spend another million and a half dollars to keep doing this for another six months? And are conditions in this place going to get better for people? Or, like, what are we actually doing? And I know that you're not, you're the Housing Services, so I, I guess I'm looking at, my, my main concern, my main concern related to housing and homelessness is that we're reducing homelessness by creating actual affordable housing, which we're basically not doing in this city at all. And the mayor hasn't committed any money to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and from what I understand from the forthcoming charter amendment, is that basically that charter, that housing, Affordable Housing Trust Fund is basically trying to be gutted as to make it non-existent. And so, what are we thinking?
Okay. Well, and I think, to start to respond, I want to go back to what I, what I started with, that I think we need to be able to have honest conversations about the choices we make and the resources we expend and how we do things. There's an incredible amount of truth in some of the various things you said. I've also spent a great deal of time with a number of the residents who feel that getting off the street, getting out of tents and having case managers and being, sleeping in a bed for the first time, in some cases, in years, because they wouldn't go to a traditional shelter where there was no room, or they got to go with their partner, was, was life-changing. But I also acknowledge what you're saying, there's a lot of truths in this. It is a very hard conversation to have about where we put facilities, even if they're temporary bridge housing. We have a facility now, Pinderhues, that we've used for winter. Its future is uncertain because of community concern. When we are getting suggestions of places we can use as additional shelter space or bridge housing space for people that are on the road to housing, the suggestions are all very much like you said, we didn't have the time to fight a protracted battle. We had 40 beds that were empty and unused in a safe, secure, well-inspected facility. What you're saying about the facilities with the computer lab and others, we found out after the fact that there were issues with the other federal agency that funded that side where it couldn't be used by anybody else. That, that's real. But the goal's also to get them out of there as soon as we can and into permanent housing. So I think there's a lot of ways you can cut this and a lot of ways you can look at it. I don't want to create closed encampment centers. I'd like to see community-based, you know, up in Harlem, they have brownstones, where people are coming off the street out of drug addiction, and they're living there for a few months at a time while they get their ID and other things together. I can tell you this, we expedited the delivery of IDs and the wrangling of paperwork and everything from the folks living there at a speed that's hyper faster than what we were doing when they were on the street, missing appointments with case managers. So, Councilman, you're right.
This wasn't just offering, you know, this thing that some people perceived as life-changing, because it was the first time they had this opportunity in a long time. Opportunity is one thing, being given a choice is another, you know, is one thing, but saying you no longer have the choice to stay where you are staying, and for this administration to be doing that for the second time in a short order, right? Because this was the second encampment that this administration closed.
Five individuals that had been promised housing vouchers in the previous Merrill administration were moved into a hotel for two months while we got their housing vouchers online. That was me, because we had made that promise, and so that's what we did. If, you can call it an encampment closure, you can call it an eradication, those folks are housed.
It is an encampment closure, right?
It was a closure.
You can't, you can't go back there.
Those folks are housed.
Can I go there and sleep there if I need to?
What's that?
Can I go there and sleep there if I need to tonight?
You might.
Maybe? I mean-
Our goal is to not let the decisions get to the point where they're being made for safety or health concerns. We can do better, and we can do it by being proactive, and that's what I tried to lay out tonight. We have, I just want to close the loop, though, we have housed permanently seven, eight, nine folks at the VOA facility, 21-
From there, elsewhere?
Yeah, permanent housing.
Okay.
Five, six, seven, eight, now 10. 21 have completed their assessments, they didn't qualify for PSH, and so we're working them through rapid rehousing. By the way, VOA is one of the largest providers of rapid rehousing up and down the East Coast. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry that they engaged in a conversation in which they made it sound like they didn't know what they were doing, but I think that kind of, we're all in this together, we haven't done it here, they brought in resources from Virginia and other states to help make this happen. But no, it was absolutely something that we built by learning. We found it was untenable to leave the people that were where they were, and I think that what you raise is the debate that we should continue to have, the way we're held accountable, and that we've got the best plans we can have in place. We've not expended near the 1.5 million. Those were, you know, worst-case scenarios for everything, most of that's rolling over. We don't have any bridge housing funding currently built into the new model. We're going to be working to have everybody in that facility housed by December. The other thing is, I agree, wasn't, it's not where I'd pick, you know, it's not where I'd pick at all, but, you know, I-
Well, okay, and, and just for a sense of comparison here, Terry-
But we needed the ability to do it quickly.
For a sense of comparison here, for 40 people, for six months, dividing, you know, out of, out of a million and a half dollars, that's enough to put $75,000, that's like $75,000 a year, right? That's $37,500.
If you continue, if you continue to fund it.
We have people working for the city of Baltimore as full-time employees who make less than $25,000 a year.
Right.
I think that people could do pretty well if we were just simply putting $37,500 in their hand for six months. in their hand for six months.
Right. Our estimates are that every chronic street homeless individual that we house, we save the city, the medical institutions, the overall system, about $25,000 to $30,000 a year. And these are chronic street homeless that have been on the, on the streets for years. So would I do it in the exact same way we're trying to learn from that? Would I like to see bridge housing in smaller neighborhood-based facilities for the people who want it? Do I ever want to close an encampment again? I mean, these are all, I'm with you, but this is what we had to move through. And we are going to house those folks at, at a great change to their life and an extreme savings to the city.
But what you're saying is that you're saving $25,000 per person by spending $37,500 per person, if you break it down by the rate that was set out of a million and a half for 40 people for six months.
And that's a maximum. But our shelters, I mean, our regular traditional emergency shelters are fairly expensive, but we need to have them open until we eradicate homelessness. At least, now remember, this contract was part bridge housing, and a lot of that was housing navigation.
What I'm saying is you could, you could actually get all 40 of those people into permanent housing by spending that money on them. By $37,500 is a lot of money. I, that's how much I made before I was a city councilperson, right? And I own a home in a really nice neighborhood in Baltimore City.
Right. I hear you loud and clear, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. So, um, I, I know we're behind schedule, but, um, this is an important topic, so I want to make certain that each of the councilpersons get an opportunity to ask their questions. So, um, Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I pulled up the Journey Home website to just learn a bit more about the project, um, and was just hoping you could give me some additional information. Um, on here, under strategic priorities are a number of headers, uh, healthcare, um, sorry, having problems with my, income, uh, prevent, prevention, uh, prevention, emergency services, and then sub, subcategories around priority actions. Well, sort of just, if you could give me a little bit of background of who developed these priorities, how often are they revisited, and then I have some questions, at least one about one of the, the actions.
Okay, so the, the Journey Home Plan was part of previous administration. The Continuum of Care, when it was reformed, has established a related, but long list that we're happy to share with you of what the COCs, they go along with all of HUD's new policies and, and whatnot. But, um, that's there as a reminder of where we were coming from, and there's a lot of similarities. But, but the COCs developed its own priorities in line with what the mayor's office is trying to do.
Okay. Uh, and the reason I was asking about that is, um, one of the, the primary issues that, uh, we know about homelessness is there's, there's sort of a, there's a spectrum, right? There's some people who are homeless for a short amount of time, um, and there's some folks who are chronically homeless. And much, much of the calls that I get from people in my district are people who are unemployed, underemployed, temporarily unemployed, or maybe they're actually working and living out of their car and, and can't afford rent, or they're on the verge of eviction and are concerned about how to get help. Um, and all of this sort of swirls around the issue of economics. And, and I was excited to see that the number one priority action to address income is advocating to raise the minimum wage to a livable wage. Can you talk about progress that was made on that?
Well, under the Journey Home Plan, no. I mean, I can't, I, I can't speak to any other, I mean, I think there's what's played out in the city, and I think there's the understanding from all the advocates and the folks that we work with who believe that people do need to make more money. I can't, I can't speak to what the best way to get that done is. We also need, and where we're focusing our attempts, is we need better and more transitional jobs, you know, particularly for older, young people that are on the streets. We need ability for them to start to come in, um, in sort of non-traditional ways and start to earn money to move towards sustainability. So the Journey, or the, um, the Journey to Jobs model that Hannah was talking about is really the growth and evolution of a lot of that, but done in a really established way. So we'll make sure everybody in the council gets a copy of the report when it's released, the barriers and what the next steps and recommendations we have around economics are.
So, so just, so I'm clear, the new sort of guidance basically says we shouldn't be advocating to raise the minimum wage?
No, I just think that's outside my, my purview to speak to.
But at one point it was, it would have been under your agency's sort of purview and, and to advocate for that?
That was under the-
I mean, under previous administration.
Yeah, that was under the, that was under the board that the previous mayor put together.
Okay. Um, and, and so really what I'm trying to get at is that I think this should be something that's a priority. If we're not advocating for increasing wages, how are we actually trying to, it's, it's one people, for people to get a job, but if you know that people are living out of the back of their car who have a job, I, I would, one would think that it would be important for your agency and for the administration, which I, I don't think, this is very clear. Like, I mean, we know that this is a cause of homelessness. I'm just surprised that future plans and, and subsequent administrations didn't continue to carry that as a priority action. Uh, a livable wage is something that, is exactly what we're talking about. How do you afford that housing? How do you afford food? How do you afford to keep your lights on? And which is things that we know when trying to address homelessness is a challenge for people, is that you can't just put them in a house and walk away, right? They need wraparound services, but they also need the income to support themselves.
Right.
And one of the things that we know is, is becoming an issue in the city, or is it, has been an issue in the city, is affordability. Um, gentrification is a real thing in Baltimore. And as water rates goes up, as BG&E goes up, and the cost of living has gone up, I, I'm just very disappointed that this priority, number one, the number one priority action under this subheading, uh, has not something that has been carried over under this administration.
Yeah, and you make an excellent point, and I just want to add, and you have our commitment, and we'll show this to you in the numbers, that employability, employment, and economic sustainability are big parts of our rapid rehousing piece. And we are hiring a workforce systems person in the next budget year. We found a way to, to braid some additional federal funding. We will have somebody whose job it is is to be thinking about economic sustainability and an actual job coach, job developer on staff that we've never had before.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, the, the second question, uh, because I know we're, we're short on time, uh, one, we have a number of programs, uh, and agencies that do direct outreach, and it sort of gets to what I was talking about earlier, is this collaborative, uh, environment that I think the city needs to move towards and has, and has been doing, um, to give credit. Uh, but one of the things that we know, for example, programs like Safe Streets, uh, we have outreach workers, uh, and we're expanding that to, to nine sites. What sort of collaboration is there with Safe Streets workers or any other health department workers, code enforcement staff, uh, who are going out, they're in the street, they're on the ground, um, to both help train them in, in, in what resources are available to connect people to, uh, and collaborate with the outreach workers that you have here today, so, so that they know where to direct people and, and where to get help. And, and it's sort of, again, breaking down these silos, right? And this, this even goes beyond even just direct outreach. I mean, this is the, a push I make with the police department and with Public Works, is if your officers are driving down an alley and you see a tent set up, or you see somebody sleeping on a mattress, what are they, what are they, what are the protocols in place for them to connect with your agency or connect with your workers so that they're not just driving by, right?
Right.
And that's, I think, the frustration that people have in the city is that they assume that city workers are, are seeing things but not saying anything. And, and, and what can we institutionalize as a practice, uh, for other agencies that we know are out in communities or out downtown, that when they see homelessness, that they are then making these referrals internally?
Right. So let me say that what you're describing is what we're moving towards, and I'll give you some quick hits. So Nate and his team, we're training all the NCOs, the community officers at the police department. Um, me or one of my staff, Chris, is at every VR meeting, VRI meeting in the morning. So we do an incredible amount of collaboration between the different departments you were just mentioning. We fund three organizations, PEP, HCAM, and...
One other one?
HCH, to do outreach. We have a hip group where all the outreach that work with homeless around the city, BHSP-funded or us, all get together on a regular basis. Part of Angela's job, coming on board, is going to be to help us develop a multifaceted, citywide outreach strategy. But a lot of what Nate and his team are doing are helping educate people, when do you call the police? When do you call SIT? What does the hot team do? How do we all work together? The hot team used to be people's first call often, and that's not, that's not the way you want to run a system. So I think we are doing that. I think getting into some of these other systems, like we haven't had a lot of conversations with Safe Streets yet. That's a great idea. But we've built a model to be linked. Waterfront Partnership just hired outreach based on our model, and they sent them to train with us. Um, University of Maryland has hired its own, um, community-based outreach program. They've sat down, trained with us, and we all work together. So we're seeing the pieces start to emerge. But I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So I've, I've been very negligent in my coordinating this panel. So what I'm going to do is we have, and we have other panelists waiting, I'm going to give us until five, which is the next eight minutes. And so, Councilman Cohen, I know you have a question. If you could refrain, hold your question to one question, and then I think Council President has one question, and then we, we'll close out with that, if that-
I'll go first, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, in service 895 temporary housing for the homeless is budgeted a, a funding increase, um, of $2 million for winter emergency shelter. Where would that money go?
Sure, I'll go back to, um, thank you, Mr. President, for that question. So that's a broad-based budget area. So in my introduction, that excludes outreach. So outreach has its own budget area. This is going to be increasing year-round emergency shelter capacity and quality. We have some of our shelters that weren't previously funded to do full dinners or to focus on healthy food. Um, there's a number of shelters that need serious repair and, and help. I had mentioned, I think, before you came in, we're doing away with the naming of overflow shelters. Just because you don't get a bed at Weinberg doesn't mean you're overflow. You're in, you know, we need to call them what they are, and we need to bring them all up to speed. This will put case managers and front door prevention specialists at all of our shelters to try to help keep people from even needing to go into the shelter if they have other options. Um, this is going to allow us to continue to grow our winter shelter options, where we do guaranteed shelter in the winter. We saw what a bad winter can turn into. And this also puts case managers in our expanded winter sites to make sure that we're capturing everybody there. This is going to build out our full coordinated access team that's going to take over that whole new front door model of doing the assessments and getting people scored for housing to get them out of shelters. And it's going to create a fund for us to supplement our supportive, even though it's under temporary, we put our supportive housing measures here in this budget line that helps us fund that transition to permanent housing. So it's really doing a lot, all with the eye of getting people moving through the system quicker, into housing faster and more permanently.
Okay. Um, we, we give a lot of money to a lot of organizations to house homeless people crap. All right, all those organizations, if you could make sure that we get the metrics and, you know, how well they're doing, or if they're not doing well, and get it to the Budget Committee.
Great.
All right.
Absolutely.
Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Terry. Uh, a few, real quick. So William Pinderhues, I used to teach there. Uh, I would not want to live there, and I would assume most other people would not want to live there as well. So I was curious why that was selected as the site, uh, to move folks to. But sort of my larger question is, I'm just not really clear on what our strategy is overall. Are we moving toward housing first? Are we, uh, you know, I know we're no longer doing the road home. Uh, it just feels like I haven't been able to fully understand what is the strategy that we're moving toward. I'd heard the number 350 million thrown around a little while ago about that's what it would cost to house everybody. I guess, and I know we're up against the clock-
Sure.
But if you could, uh, what is the administration's strategy? Are we still doing housing first? What does that mean? What are the wraparound services that we need to make successful, make it successful? What is the number? Is it 350 million? Where are we toward that number? What are the metrics that we've identified to move toward housing everybody? I just, I wish, I, I was trying to hear through this presentation, like, what's the North Star? Where are we trying to go to?
Right. And I, you know, it also shows me we've got more work to do and continuing to meet with the council and others to sort of put this message out there. 350 would get us a good way down the road to creating some new PSH units. It's not going to get us out of homelessness. What we found out we had to do was we had to go back to the very beginning and say, if this is a highway, if homelessness is this pipeline, we got to identify the key areas people were getting stuck. They were getting stuck on the street because there wasn't enough outreach. They were getting stuck in shelters because there wasn't enough case management, and they were getting stuck on the end of those shelters because there was no good, when the, when the federal government stopped, you know, moving the vouchers the way they had in the past, we had to figure, so over the last year, we've had to figure out all those sticking points. So I'm not trying to be coy, but the idea of moving people more quickly, 30% drop in a year in the time spent homelessness is like a Wake Up HUD national precedent kind of number as a starting point. But if we aren't careful on the backend, we're going to fall back into it because new people are coming into the system every day. So I've talked about how we have to improve our shelters, make them places people feel safe going but want to get out of more quickly because there's options. And then we have to develop permanent housing plans that don't depend on the federal government or do it in really unique ways using resources we already have. We're going to release a plan over the summer that shows a way to creatively open up 140 permanent housing slots for families and individuals. A big chunk of those are going to be families. And so it's developing innovative permanent supportive housing. It's using rapid rehousing as a tool, and then it's moving everybody through more quickly. And I will give you all, I'll send you a schematic that shows that breakdown, and I'll show you the cost of each of those stages, including what the cost of rapid rehousing, the cost of permanent supportive housing, and the per-person estimate for supportive services. So you can see for yourself what that model looks like as you scale up for our approximately 2,500, um, chronic homeless in Baltimore City.
So is housing first still the strategy?
Housing first is the strategy, but what that, it's, it is one of the most misused terms I've ever heard coming into this. Housing first means we don't put people in places where they're going to sit and get services until programs feel like they can move forward. It is up to the individual to decide when they're ready for housing and to get them into it as quickly as possible. What you've seen, what Councilman Dorsey raised, which is an issue, we will never be able to get rid of the, you know, the, the building inspections and the navigating with landlords and the ID issue, like, those take up the bulk of the time. But housing first is not just what we've bought into 100%, but it is what HUD, the VA, and every funding agency says has to be the case, which is why you see very little transitional housing left in the city. That's why bridge housing became such an attractive option to get people off the street with immediate housing plans in place. In transitional housing, you would be there for a year before you'd even be, begin to develop a plan. So that's, but it's movement, and it's, we have to have some breakthroughs in permanent housing to get ahead. And Pinderhues, Councilman?
When I came into this job, it's the one building that my little agency controlled. We had put money in it. Um, it was safe, it was secure, and it was a place to, it was never meant for a place for people to live. But no shelter should be. So we, we just need to keep moving forward.
Do appreciate your outreach team. They do a good job.
Thank you.
So, so, uh, thank you, Terry. Um, and as you can tell, that, uh, this issue is a critical issue to this council. Um, I, I think that the, the conversation or discussion around this has probably been some of the most vibrant of this budget cycle. So, um, it is a critical issue. But we, we want to thank you and your team for the services that you provide to some of our most vulnerable citizens in the city. Uh, we will move and transition, it ends this panel on homeless services. We will quickly transition into our next panel, which is on retirement services. Um, thank you.
Thank you all.